Good evening, folks. We'll call the Tuesday, September 18th, 2012, meeting of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners to order. And I'll lead us in our invocation this evening. Join us, please. Father, we thank you again for this opportunity to serve you. We thank you for those in attendance tonight, and their interests, and their service. We just ask that you'll give us a servant's heart that will examine our motives, that our motives will be right before you, that you'll impart to us your wisdom. We pray for those scattered around the world tonight in defense of our country. We pray for those families who suffer such a terrible loss that you will comfort them. We pray for those who've been wounded, that you would heal them. We pray for those tonight, Father, who remain on the battlefield, and those who serve them with ammunition and food. We just pray you'd bless them, that you'd build a hedge around them and you would keep them from harm. And that there'd be an end to hostilities and they can come home again. Nevertheless, we thank you for them, and we thank you for their service and what they mean to us. We thank you for our country and the blessings of liberty, the blessings of liberty that we enjoy tonight as we strive to serve you. We ask you in the name of our Lord, amen. Join us, let's see, host the colors. Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda coming from the staff this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that we pull Item D under Administrative Matters, and that's Memo Number Seven.
Is that all you have, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any amendments coming from any member of the board? I have one this evening under unfinished business. The appointment of a replacement commissioner for the existing vacancy. Are there any other adjustments? Hearing none, I move that we adopt this agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This evening, under special presentation of special recognitions and awards, we have a recognition and presentation of a Purple Heart Medal to Franklin Louis Stikeleather. Mr. Stikeleather was wounded on May 29, 1970, in Vietnam while assigned to Charlie Company, Third Battalion, Seventh Infantry Regiment, 199th Infantry Brigade. And Sergeant Stroud, I believe, is here. Could you come forward, please, sir?
Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, and guests. As you well know, the Iredale County Veteran Service Office is the smallest department in the county by both budget and personnel. We primarily work within the framework of the federal government. And some people ask why county government employs such a position. The answer is advocacy. As the Iredale County Veteran Service Office, we are a nationally accredited and trained service office, paid solely by Iredale County to be the advocate for the veterans and their dependents and/or survivors. Our ties and allegiance is to the veteran, not a system, to help them obtain each and every benefit that they have earned. Which brings me to the presentation here tonight. It is my distinct honor and pleasure to complete the process of correcting an error and admission made more than 42 years ago. I met Frankie Stikeleather at Trinity Volunteer Fire Department, where he has continued to be of service to this great nation and the local community for the past 40 years. He discussed with me that he believed he was awarded the Purple Heart but never received it. Upon obtaining additional evidence from Mr. Stikeleather and other sources, we submitted on April 12th, 2012, an application for correction of military records. And on August 6th, U.S. Army granted our request. The Purple Heart is limited to members of the Armed Forces of the United States, who while serving under a component authority in any capacity with one of the Armed Forces after 5 April, 1917, who has been wounded or killed, or who has died, or may hereafter die after being wounded. Having this award to now present, I would be remiss, as Paul Harvey would say, to tell you the rest of the story as to how Frankie received his injuries. Franklin Louis Stikeleather was awarded the Bronze Star Heroism, Bronze Star Medal for heroism of Edelweiss. I want to read to you that medal. We're not presenting it. His Bronze Star was presented properly, but the Purple Heart was not. Specialist Four Stikeleather distinguished himself by exceptional heroism in connection with ground operations against an armed hostile force in the Republic of Vietnam on 29 May, 1970, while assigned to Charlie Company, Third Battalion, Seventh Infantry, 199th Infantry Brigade. On that date, Special Stikeleather was stationed at fire support base SUN when a battalion of heavily armed enemy troops attacked the base. Without regard to his personal safety, Special Stikeleather continuously exposed himself to the intense hostile fire in order to engage the enemy despite the wounds he suffered. His alert and aggressive actions contributed significantly to the routing the enemy and earned him the respect and admiration of all whom he served. Specialist Four Stikeleather's heroic actions were in the best keeping with the highest tradition to the military service and reflect great credit upon himself, his unit, and the United States Army. As you can discern from these statements contained in this citation, Mr. Stikeleather met and exceeded both the criteria for the Bronze Star for heroism and the Purple Heart. Franklin Louis Stikeleather was, is, and continues to be a hero by offering his selfless service to his country and his continued dedication to the county as volunteer fireman at Trinity Fire Department. So without further ado.
Please stand. Attention, Orders. United States of America, to all who shall see these presents, greeting. This is to certify that the President of the United States of America has awarded the Purple Heart, established by General George Washington at Newburgh, New York, August 7th, 1782, to Specialist Four Franklin L. Stikeleather, United States Army, for wounds received in action in the Republic of Vietnam, 29 May, 1970, given under my hand in the city of Washington this sixth day of August, 2012, signed by Secretary of the Army.
Commissioner Robertson's request to address the audience.
For those of you who don't know any, all those numbers, just kinda, you know, when people read out units, they don't always know what it means. Mr. Stikeleather was in the 199th. It was actually a light infantry brigade. And light infantry means they don't have the heavily armored vehicles. They don't have the big, heavy guns, the big, heavy weapons. It's a light unit. It was young men, just like Mr. Stikeleather, with light machine guns and rifles that closed with the enemy. Their job was to close with the enemy and kill them in the jungle. They were the only unit, they were the only unit in Vietnam that had a general officer killed in combat. Now, if the generals are so close to the fighting that they can get killed, you can imagine what a specialist, how close he was. The 199th was known for being in a tough area and having tough soldiers, and they weren't afraid to go looking for the bad guys. And, you know, it's amazing. Sometimes we walk amongst great men and never know it. We worked at the same plant, and I had no idea that I was in the midst of a hero. My hat's off to you, and everybody just needs to know, this wasn't some strange event where somebody got hurt in a faraway place. He was a member of an elite unit who had a tremendous reputation, and they had that reputation due to men like him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. At this point, we have a recognition and presentation of appreciation plaque to County Retiree Ronnie Thompson, our Fire Marshal. And since Commissioner Frank Mitchell is on the Fire Tax Board, I'm gonna ask him to come forward and make this presentation, please, sir. Mr. Thompson, if you and your wife Gladys would come forward, please.
I'm gonna do a pile of rock and chair, huh?
Okay, we'll continue. This time, we have an appointment for the board. It's a presentation from Mr. Neil Burke, Mooresville Transportation Planner, regarding amendments to the 2008 Mooresville Comprehensive Transportation Plan, along with the consideration of calling for a public hearing on December 4th, 2012, at 7:00 P.M. for the purpose of receiving public comments regarding amendments to the reference plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
I am before all of you this evening to offer up an information-only presentation regarding a series of amendments to an adopted transportation plan that both the town, Iredale County, and NCDOT have adopted back in 2008. Just a little bit of a brief background regarding these amendments. Why is the transportation plan important? Well, the purpose of this plan is that it allows the town to reserve right-of-way for future transportation projects. It ensures that roads are adequately developed to handle anticipated and existing development. And it's important to note that the CTP is a planning document. By including proposed projects in this plan, it does not commit the town, the county, or NCDOT to fund these projects. The purpose of this amendment is to update the plan. As you all know, there have been significant construction projects completed within the town of Mooresville and in South Iredale County. And there's also been a series of small-area plans done throughout the Mooresville area. So we want to bring the recommendations from those plans into this overarching plan that incorporates all the transportation throughout the town of Mooresville. And there is a series of presentations I will be making this fall. I will be presenting this presentation to the Planning Board on October 3rd and requesting that a public hearing be held before the board again on December 4th. Also, I did distribute a packet containing the draft Comprehensive Transportation Plan amended maps, as well as a guide for different roadway classification types. Just a word about functional class. This is a term that NCDOT uses to classify roadways based upon what the purpose of that roadway is and the overall cross-section. If you refer to the chart that I passed out to the clerk before the meeting, a freeway, for example, is Interstate 77, major thoroughfare. An example of that would be NC-150 Boulevard. Could be Morris and Plantation Parkway. And I'd like to draw your attention to the purpose and the cross-section on the chart that I passed out. As you can see, with a major thoroughfare, we're trying to balance regional traffic to access local streets and businesses. That's typically one to three lanes in each direction. A minor thoroughfare handles mostly local traffic with moderate speeds and volumes. And this is one to three lanes in each direction, or, I'm sorry, one lane per direction. And I'm gonna reference this chart kinda throughout my presentation. This is the first, this slide is the first in a series of several amendments I'm just gonna briefly touch on tonight. And several of these amendments are what I call reclassifications, where the previous plan specified a roadway to be a certain classification. And after town staff has reviewed this with NCDOT, we are recommending a different classification. This is Shears Road between Rocky River Road and the Mecklenburg County line. In the 2008 plan, it was classified as an other major thoroughfare needs improvements. We feel that the future land use and transportation needs along this corridor would be more indicative of a minor thoroughfare needs improvements. And what this change does is it'll limit improvements to turn lanes and safety improvements and will reduce the amount of right-of-way needed to accomplish these improvements. It's also important to note that Shear Road in Mecklenburg County is classified as a minor thoroughfare needs improvements. And throughout this amendment process, we're looking to kinda match roadway classification throughout county and different boundary lines. The next proposed amendment that I'll be talking about is the Midnight Lane, Oats Road Proposed Overpass. This was in our 2008 plan as a collector street. And the definition of a collector street is primarily to deliver traffic from local streets to thoroughfares. But in reviewing this recommendation, staff feels that this would be more representative of a minor thoroughfare, which would handle mostly local traffic but provide an alternative to the NC-150 corridor. And I'll also note that, you know, this amendment does not commit the town or the county to any funding or anything like that. It's simply a reclassification that staff is recommending. The Dooley Road, Oak Tree Road reclassification, staff has recommended, again, similar to Midnight Oats. This was classified as collector street in the 2008 plan. And with two schools in this vicinity, we feel that this roadway is more similar to what a minor thoroughfare needs improvements is per NCDOT's definitions. And this connection could be used as an alternative to the NC-150 corridor. It would involve the construction of a bridge over a portion of Lake Norman. Again, long-range project. It's good from a transportation standpoint, but there hasn't really been any additional work done to investigate this since the 2008 plan was adopted. The next roadway amendment, and all of these are on the highway map, which is the second map you'll come to in your packet. We recommend a reclassification. Stutz Road was initially a local street. And this is a very narrow road. I think it's 18 feet of pavement out there. There's 5,000 daily vehicles. Many vehicles are towing boats. And, you know, we recommend that this is classified as a minor thoroughfare needs improvements to account for, you know, future widening of the travel lanes to 12 feet at some point in the future and possibly turn lane improvements at specific intersections on an as-needed basis. The Cornelius Road, Mizepa Road connector, this was also included in the 2008 plan. It was a very preliminary alignment. Since that plan was adopted, the town has completed an alignment feasibility study. So the alignment has shifted slightly to minimize impacts to the built environment. So this amendment just basically accounts for the new roadway alignment. And an update on that, the town is in the process of completing roadway construction drawings for this connector. And the town has acquired one parcel for right-of-way and is in negotiations with several other property owners to help advance this project. The next two reclassifications I'm gonna discuss involve completed small-area plans. This is the Cornelius Road Small Area Plan. There were two transportation recommendations in that plan. And the purpose of this amendment is to get these recommendations into our CTP. The first is the realignment of Bluefield Road. Basically, Bluefield Road is 75 feet west of the existing I-77 lanes right now. And that will need to be relocated to widen I-77. But, you know, why it was in the small-area plan was it needs to be realigned to accomplish future development out in that area. And the dotted line is just, you know, one possibility for how that roadway can be realigned. It doesn't have to be realigned at a 90-degree angle at that one point there. That's something that we can address as that area develops. The second recommendation is the I-77 X-More Road grade separation. There isn't a need out there for that overpass now. But looking at that Cornelius Road Small Area Plan, the anticipated development showed that additional connectivity, east-west connectivity across I-77 was needed. So, again, this is a long-range planning document, and we just want to get some of these recommendations in there from our small-area plans. The second transportation recommendation was from the Brawley School Road Small Area Plan. And this is a connection between Silverhook Drive and Sundown Road. And this project would serve the intended development that was described in the small-area plan. And it would also take some pressure off of Brawley School Road and Williamson Road. And staff recommends that this connection is classified as a minor thoroughfare recommended in the Mooresville CTP Highway map. Town staff met with Troutman and Statesville and Iredale County to kinda talk about our different comprehensive transportation plans on August 28th. And there were several other additional roadway corridors that we recommend changing. The Perth Road Corridor in the Mooresville CTP is classified as a Boulevard Needs Improvements from NC-150 to Cornelius Road. However, the Troutman CTP shows us as Boulevard Needs Improvements. So staff's recommending that all of the Perth Road Corridor is classified as a Boulevard Needs Improvements. Oswald Amity and Flowerhouse Loop, we recommend that they would be classified as Minor Thoroughfare Needs Improvements to match the designation specified in the Troutman CTP. The next map in the Comprehensive Transportation Plan is Public Transit Rail. Just a couple of small amendments. The first is to change the express bus service from existing to recommended along Williamson Road and I-77. The town board for Mooresville voted not to renew a service contract with CATS for the 83X at the October 18th, 2010 meeting. And also, the town and CATS have approved the relocation of the commuter rail station from the Legacy Village Development to the Knox Property. That was approved in 2012. And the town has refused the CMAC Park and Ride project funds because that proposed rail station has moved. The last amendment is to amend this map to account for the I-77 Hot Lanes Project. That can be shown on this map as operational strategies recommended. Bicycle and pedestrian map amendments. The bicycle map was updated to reflect recommendations from approved plans like the Carolina Thread Trail and the Lake Norman Bike Route. Existing bike lanes were shown on the map that was not shown in the 2008 version. And roadway corridors identified for improvements in the bicycle plan were also shown on this map. The pedestrian map, existing sidewalk data was updated to reflect 2012 conditions. And recommended multi-use paths from the bicycle map were also added to the pedestrian map. There's a section of the amendment that includes a written report. And in that report, we discuss a couple of amendments to the Collector Street Plan map. We provide an update on the Fairview Flyover Exit 33 feasibility study that the town is currently undertaking with NCDOT. We also provide a narrative on the benefits that a diverging diamond interchange conversion would have at I-77 and NC-150. And we also reference NCDOT's complete streets policy. Many of the town's adopted plans and ordinances already encourage complete streets, but this is just to memorialize it, more or less. This is a schedule of the CTP amendments. In October, like I said before, I'm gonna be presenting to the Iredale County Planning Board. There'll be a public hearing before the Town of Mooresville Board of Commissioners on October, I'm sorry, on October 15th. We'll be presenting to the Planning Board on October 15th. We'll be presenting to the Planning Board on October 11th. There's a request for a public hearing before the County Board on December 4th, and we'll, we also need to bring this before the Lake Norman RPO and NC DOT for, for adoption of these amendments later on in the winter. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Are there any questions, Mr. Burke?
Sure. First of all, as, we appreciate you coming. The, the Town of Mooresville has been very fortunate to have Mr. Burke, as you can tell, he's, he's one of those people that looks over the horizon to, to see what's coming and, and try to get ready for it. And, and the level of detail that he plans is, is exceptional. So thank you very much. I, I did have a, a question or two, and I'm asking it just so that you can state it so that we can, as, as many people say, manage expectations. In here, you're talking about a bridge that would connect Dooley to, Dooley Road to Oak Tree Road, which basically connects the road with Lake Norman Elementary, over the lake with Lake, with Lake Norman High School. Timing and probability that that would be approved. Would, would you like to, to just comment on that so that we don't have people wondering if they're going to see a bridge being built next year?
In my professional opinion, there hasn't been any work done since the 2008 plan. Why I was referring to that connection tonight was to simply reclassify it. And my best guess, I would say 15 to 20 years at the earliest, but keep in mind, there needs to be a lot of additional planning and engineering work done to determine if, if that's feasible and what type of impacts there would be to adjacent property owners. There also needs to be, you know, a lot more public outreach done out there, because I know that there, there was, you know, some opposition to that connection in the past. But the reason why it's in here is I still believe that it's a good connection from a transportation network benefit. So I hope I answered your question.
You did.
Okay.
You did.
Great.
And then the next one is, I, I noticed a lot of what you were doing was, a lot of the plans were trying to relieve the congestion at, at Exit 36.
Yes, sir.
And I can remember 20 years ago, we swore that we wouldn't have an Exit 28 in, in, in Iredell County. And now people in Troutman are swearing that they're not going to have an Exit 36 in, in Troutman. A, a lot of, a lot of what you're looking to do is, is basically to give people other options over the interstate without having to go to Exit 33 or, or, or Exit 36. With the plans that you have, or with what you're looking as far as a projection, how are we going to manage the tendency for especially truck traffic not to then consider Cornelius Road to be a de facto 150 bypass, which to, to some degree, it already is?
Mm-hmm.
But would you like to just comment on what y'all's thinking are with respect to, to Cornelius Road?
Well, in the CTP in 2008, it referenced that corridor, the Cornelius Road Corridor and Mazepa Road up to Overhead Bridge as boulevard needs improvement. So, you know, with the 2030 Horizon, you know, what, what those corridors need to be when they grow up, so to speak, is they need to be, you know, two 12-foot lanes in each direction with a, a concrete median or a grass median in the middle. So that would really help us handle the capacity. But also, there needs to be, you know, care or consideration given to how the trucks might go from the business park to a future interchange, say at I-77. So, you know, talking about turning radii at intersections, things like that, we need to design for trucks, but we also need to kind of balance the truck traffic with NC 150 and, and Cornelius Road. But, you know, with, I mean, NC 150 carries 35,000 vehicles a day, so I, I would almost want to ship some of that truck traffic over to Cornelius Road, but not all of it.
Okay. Thank you.
When do you expect to see some activity starting on that diverging diamond for 150?
Well, I'll provide a quick update on that. The town submitted a mobility fund application. NC DOT offers up money on the, on a, you know, an annual basis for projects that would provide a regional benefit, and resolutions were signed by your board, by the Mooresville Town Board, the Lake Norman RPO, and the Hickory MPO for this project. And we, we did not get awarded mobility funds to construct a diverging diamond, but we are in discussions with NC DOT about the funding source. It, it's definitely a priority of, of Division 12. We've discussed the benefits, and they've run some analyses to determine that it really would have a congestion reduction benefit. So I'd like to, you know, think that that could be an improvement that, that could be on the ground within the next five years, but the town and NC DOT need to come to an agreement on where the funding's coming from.
You say maybe in five years we can start it, and probably a year constructing it or more? What would it take?
Probably a year and a half. It's a pretty complicated reconstruction, and, you know, there's just a lot of traffic on the NC 150 corridor. So I, I would think that a lot of the major heavy lifting would be done on nights and weekends, or maybe not even weekends, because there's just as much traffic out there at that point.
You say it's 35,000 cars on 150 now?
On the NC 150 corridor adjacent to I-77.
And what's the traffic count on 77 from one, from the 150 going south?
In that area, the latest counts I've seen are somewhere in the 60,000 to 70,000 vehicle range, but it gets up to 80,000 vehicles between Davidson and Exit 31 Langtree Road.
Okay. Mr. Burke, when you talk about the realignment of Bluefield, I, I assume for the most part you'd be talking about the portion of Bluefield that is north of Big Indian?
Yes, sir.
The wide I-77.
Yes, sir.
And I'm encouraged by your remarks where you, where you said there probably need to be some, an educational process on the front end of that. There was a lot of consternation from folks out there in that area, I think, because at least from their perspective, they were not reached out to and educated as to what the intent was earlier.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd encourage you to do that.
Okay.
And I appreciate your awareness of that, of that matter. And you're speaking to it. Any other questions? Okay, so the request you're making is for us to schedule a public hearing on December 4th, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's a requirement of NC DOT. Whenever a CTP is amended, that we provide an opportunity for the public to, to comment on the amendments.
Okay, so the request before you, members of the board, is to schedule a public hearing on December 4th, 2012. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion to approve this request for a public hearing on December 4th, 2012. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We have no public hearing scheduled this evening. That brings us to administrative matters. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A is a request for a decision regarding a request from Brad Howard to rezone 13.48 acres owned by Fred Lowrance on Alcove Road. And this is a continuation of our discussion from the last meeting in which public hearing was held and was held. And Joey Roskowski's going to make a presentation on this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, members of the board. Again, this was tabled from your last meeting, and the direction from the board to the applicant, or the discussion, rather, from the board to the applicant was to reduce the size of the overall request. Originally, it was 13.48 acres. The request has been reduced to 3.94 acres. And in front of you tonight, the clerk handed out a revised survey, and this survey was not included in your agenda packet, because we did not get it in time from the applicant, but it is before you tonight, and it is represented on the presentation as well. So again, the request has been reduced to 3.94 acres. It remains a general use rezoning request with no conditions or limitations. And it fronts Alcove Road with approximately 400 feet of frontage. This is a larger version, and it's in the northeast corner of that parcel. And if you'll recall, looking at this screen, you see the area highlighted in blue, that's the reduced-size 3.94-acre tract. And originally, this was the 13 and a half-acre tract. Again, this area, as the 13 acres was, is included in the corridor commercial future land use designation within the 2030 Horizon Plan. Again, this is a, another close-up, just a refresher from our last meeting. And this also shows that this parcel remains as was described prior, which is mainly wooded. Just again, a refresher, community water is available. Water and sewer could be provided by the Town of Mooresville at some point in the future. There will be buffering required along the northern and western boundaries should this be developed for commercial purposes. And also, you recall that this is located within the Catawba-Lake Norman Critical Area watershed, which limits the amount of impervious surface that can be developed on this 3.94 acres. The Planning Board reviewed the original request. Again, it was 5-2 in favor of recommending the original request, but the planning staff can support this reduced-size request as well on this parcel. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and I do know that Brad Howard is, is here with us tonight as well.
Any questions, Mr. Roskowski? Hearing none. Let me, let me make a couple of statements here. Mr. Roskowski, I appreciate the, the work you've done on this. I appreciate your straightforwardness, and in your tenure here already, I've begun to develop a great deal of confidence in, in you and your wisdom and your recommendations. And I know that on the front end, you, you tried to do the best you could to address the concerns of, of neighbors in this area, and as things turned out, it finally became before this board, and we began to address those things. I'm going to support this request for this reduced area, because I do not think that it will do any harm to that area. And I do believe that the area between Alcove Road and the interstate does not lend itself to residential development. I believe it'll be a commercial corridor through there regardless of, of who really thinks it's a good idea. I think the real estate market's going to dictate that. So I think it is in the best interest of, of the landowner and eventually that community to do so. However, I, I do want to make folks aware of one thing that troubled me in this process. When folks who are contemplating a rezoning, when Mr. Roskowski asks them questions and asks for the addressing of those questions, if they fail to do so, they, they do need to understand that's merely a postponement of those questions being answered. And I appreciate you answering, asking those questions. And I want you to have the confidence that when you ask those questions, that you can tell them that, that if they don't answer them, eventually they'll have to. I, I don't, I don't like to rough people up in a meeting, but sometimes folks' concerns have to be addressed in...
Sure.
...in order to do that. So you got to give somebody a rough time. Don't like to do that. But I want you to leave here with the confidence to understand that when you ask those questions, you have every confidence to tell those folks that those questions will be addressed. It's just at which point in the process that's going to happen.
Understood. Thank you for your comments.
Yes, sir. So I'll make a motion that we grant, grant this request as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Joey, I think you've got the second one, don't you?
I do. I have a request for a second public hearing to be conducted at your next meeting on October 2nd at 7:00 concerning the CBG Scattered Site Housing Program. If, if you've heard this and you think it's redundant, it is. We are required to hold two public hearings in order to submit an application. Therefore, that is a request before you tonight to simply call for the second public hearing at which we will detail the application before the public and entertain any comments they have.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, floor is open for a motion. Again, the request is to call for a public hearing on October 2nd, 2012 at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Chairman, motion to call for a public hearing on October 2nd, 7:00 PM.
Okay. We have a motion from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item E is a request for approval of a lease agreement. I'm sorry. C, request for EMS awarding a, of a purchase contract for two quick-response vehicles, and Dean Lael will make that request.
Good evening, gentlemen. Alcove EMS has currently $100,000 budgeted in its FY 2013 budget to buy two quick-response vehicles. We are prepared to pursue that. A formal bid was released. Three bids were received in response to that bid. The bids were opened at a public meeting held on August 17th. Unfortunately, all of the bids were over the original $50,000 budgeted per vehicle in the current budget. The low bidder was Southeastern Specialty Vehicles with a bid of $53,473 per vehicle. North Carolina general statutes do allow us to negotiate with the low bidder, making reasonable changes to specifications so that we can bring the project within budget. EMS staff did meet with that vendor. They were able to negotiate minor changes to the vehicle specification and bring that within budget to $49,000, $49,999 per vehicle. That, all of that without sacrificing the quality of that vehicle for its purpose. Staff is making recommendation to award the purchase contract to Southeastern Specialty Vehicles. If approved, that contract does include a one-year additional quantities clause that will allow EMS to buy additional vehicles at that same price, provided that it's approved and the budget's set for that.
I, I did have a...
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I know that you said you lowered the price without, you got the price lowered without changing the quality, okay? But I will admit that I am not the automotive expert on this board. What I just wanted to make sure is that on a $50,000 vehicle, that, that we've not asked you to, to change something that, in order to save $1,000, that, that may reduce the life of this $50,000 vehicle from, you know, eight or 10 years down to four years. When I see that you're going to change the chassis, I just go, okay, are, are we sure that we're not being penny-wise and pound foolish? You're saying that you haven't, but can you just make me feel better about it?
It was a learning experience for us as well.
Okay.
We went from a light truck package, it's still a 3/4-ton pickup truck chassis. We actually dropped it back to a work truck chassis that, it's the same truck, it's just a little less molding, a little less trim, less chrome. We're good with that. We got the, the same tools that we need in the utility body. And something that I noticed that Dean left out, you know, the potential savings, we'll be able to remount that box on another chassis when we wear these trucks out in about five or six years. So we'll be able to save some money then as well. We're good with it. It's, it's, they're not going to be as pretty, but they're functional, and that's what we care about.
I, I would just encourage you that if going through the review process of the specifications, we second-guessed ourselves because the, because it, the figure went over 50,000. Had it been 49,900, and, and we could have made that change and saved another 3,000, we probably wouldn't have gone through that process, because we had this artif-, this artificial threshold of 50,000 that, that was purely an estimate. So I, I just encourage us as a county that just because we make a rough estimate when we're doing the budget, you know, to budget to spend money two years from now, one year from now, we come up with some artificial threshold, just because we're under that threshold doesn't mean that we have the right spec- threshold doesn't mean that we have the right specs. And that, just for good management practices, I think that before we go to bid, that we should look and make sure that the specs accurately reflect everything that we need in some degree of judgment about what we want. So that's just, you're saying you learned something in the process?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's what I learned in this process.
We didn't know that you could, and the biggest learning thing for me was, you can take a work truck chassis and upgrade it, but you can't take a light truck chassis and take stuff off without incurring some cost. I had no clue about that. And a lot of people didn't, a lot of our peers didn't know that too. But once we got with the vendor, it all fell into place, so.
We expect you to be a lifesaving expert, not an automotive expert. We don't ask the guys in Vehicle Services to plug in IVs on people either, you know?
And they'd probably try.
But I mean, that's just what I'm saying is, we've got people in-house that can help.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So this will be a Chevrolet drive train and chassis?
Yes, sir. It's got the Vortec motor and the, their heavy-duty transmission. It's a four-wheel-drive crew cab. It'll be for our supervisors, the Stateful Supervisor and the Mooresville Supervisor, but it still will be a quick-response vehicle. It's, it'll be certified through the state as a quick-response vehicle, because both of them are paramedics, and they do run calls.
If it's the 1500 HD, it should carry anything they need.
It's a 2500, three-quarter ton.
Is it much difference in the GVW, gross weight of the vehicle?
No, no. It's just a heavier chassis. I wanna say it's 700, 800 pounds, I think. But the thing is, what we need in these vehicles specifically, is the trailering capacity for them. We have a mass casualty trailer that come in on grant money. We didn't have anything on the property that, we could tow it all day, but we couldn't stop it. We needed, we needed a heavier chassis to pull that trailer safely.
Any other questions? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for approval comes from Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item E is a request for approval of a lease agreement for office space between Arkle County and Partners Behavioral Health Management, and Tracy Jackson will make that request.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Here tonight to talk about a office space lease agreement with Partners Behavioral Health Management Group. They are formerly known as Crossroads Behavioral Healthcare, so you're familiar with them. David Swan would've been here tonight, but he had other commitments, and he and his staff were not able to be here, so they send their regrets. As far as the agreement itself, this, just a little history here. The original lease was approved in August of 1997 for 10 years. There was a renewal that occurred in August of 2007, and the term then was changed to five years, and it actually will expire September 30th. So we're looking at a second renewal of the lease, and let me go over just briefly what has changed in this new lease or this renewal. The term will be reduced from five years to three years. We have increased the number of parking spaces from 62 to 72 at the tenant's request. And the county has also agreed to waive the first three months of utility expenses. What would, what this would allow Partners to do is to take that money and to make improvements to the office space, which basically is paint, floor coverings, that type of thing. They've asked that we contract or take care of that upgrade for them, but they'll pay for the materials. And also, they have asked that we provide paint in office areas that need painting. We've also agreed to, in this lease, provide some labor for demolition of a counter in a office area so that we could change the purpose of that space, so they could better use it for what they intend to do there. So that's just a brief overview of some of the changes. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Kinda got an accounting question, is if we're waiving the utility fee so that they can buy the material, and then we're gonna provide the labor to take the material to do the renovations, instead of messing with the utility fees, I mean, why aren't we just buying the materials and doing the renovations? And that way, we spent, you know, we spend what we need and...
Right.
No more, no less. Why are we going through all the waiving the fee and that fee, just...
The only work that, the only work that we've agreed to do is painting in areas where it's needed. We were actually gonna contract the carpet laying and any, if it's vinyl flooring, whatever it is, in areas where it's needed, just contract that out. So somebody else would do it. It would not be our Facility Services folks that would do that part of it. The counter space, it's not gonna take that much work to get that done. I mean, I understand what you're saying.
It's our facility, right?
It is our facility.
And basically, we're paying for it, but if we give the money to them, we've given control to them, right? We give the money to them, and we say, here, you don't have to pay us for three months for utilities.
Right.
You take the money and you can do what you want to with it, then we don't, we don't have control over how that's, how that work is done or what work is done. Because that space could be coming back to us in three years.
Well, and it's always been that way in the agreement. I mean, any improvements that they made, they could make, they would fund, and they would become ours with the building.
Right. They're not funding it now, we are.
That's true. They're asked, they have asked for us to do that. That was part of this negotiation. There could've been a couple other ways to approach it. That's just the way that we've approached it and rolled it into this agreement.
I'm just asking, I'm not saying it's a better way.
Sure.
I'm just saying it's a different way that could be better, and I'm looking for heads going up and down or sideways.
Ron may touch on this. There were some tight timelines in terms of trying to get this done. I know they wanna move some staff in within the next month, and this seemed to be a good way for them to hand over to us, because they would actually be picking the materials, but we would be contracting, we'd be arranging for the contracting, the installation.
We would have, we would have an integral role in what they, what they do, what they pick out, and basically how it's done. We've had our architect in Facility Services working with them already to make sure that what they do is good for both them and for us moving forward. So we've got a good bit of control on what the end result's gonna be.
And just as a point of reference, I myself, Robert Woody, the Facility Services Director, David Montgomery, our architect, went out and met with David Swan and his facility staff, walked through the facility, is a fairly large facility. So the amount of money that we're talking for the floor coverings and the other work that's gonna be done, you know, it's probably a fairly reasonable cost. I mean, it's a large area that we're talking about. So it seemed reasonable. It did not seem unreasonable in terms of what they were asking at the time.
Okay, so this won't exceed $12,000. When we vote to do this, we're saying 12,000 is the cap?
By the agreement, that's what we've, that's what we've said it at.
I would say yes.
And actually, what we've said was three months utilities. I mean, it depends on the amount of those utilities for those three months. So we're saying between...
But assuming it's 12,000?
Three to 4,000.
That's the high, that's what we're assuming is the high.
That's our assumption on the high.
Okay. And, you know, I don't wanna speak for David, but, because I don't know everything, you know, that he was thinking through this, but it's not an unexpected cost, but it's kind of an unexpected cost for them, because they're actually gonna be bringing in, from what I understand, more people to this facility than what they thought originally.
And then where does the unpaid utility, the, whose budget pays for the utility cost?
That's budgeted out of that facility's, there's a separate budget for that facility. This is basically the health department building, and the office space is physically separate from the health department. So it's basically that other half or other side of the building.
So does that mean the health department's gonna be paying for it?
No, this is not a, this is a health department...
Correct.
The building itself is, they're separate.
They used to pay $12,000?
There's separate budgets there.
Okay, that's right. So I'm asking is, which separate budget is now gonna pay for $12,000 worth of utilities?
Not the health department.
Huh?
Not the health department.
Good, okay.
And that's what you're, I know that's what you're asking. Well, Facility Services has different budgets for buildings, so there is a separate budget, my understanding, for this building, this part of this building. Does that help?
Yeah, I just don't see...
I can't, I'm not positive, Mr. Robertson, about how the money would actually flow as far as the utilities. I know they are responsible for that, you know, and this is gonna be, their yearly costs are gonna come out of the allocation that, you know, we contribute to every year in their partner's budget now.
Let me say too, that I have spoken to finance about this, and what they plan to do is separate those bills out, because they're already, I mean, they're already paid separately. So they know that this agreement will go into effect if it's approved, and that those three months will be pulled out. So in my mind, there's no doubt that this will not come out of the wrong department's budget. This should come out of the budget set aside for that portion of that building. I hope, I hope that makes sense.
I assume we allocate money for buildings for maintenance and...
We do.
And if people pay for, if we're used to them having a revenue stream for us to pay for the utilities, if they don't do that, then we've not allocated probably more money than we planned to. 12,000, I'm just, just saying, I was just curious, somewhere, somebody has $12,000 to, a $12,000 bill to pay that they weren't expecting. I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna not do some maintenance on the building or something, because now Facility Services is paying for a utility bill, and he's gotta take it out of his maintenance budget to do it.
And that's a good question, and we did ask that question on the front end, and the budget will tolerate it, and it will not be at the sacrifice of anybody else's projects.
No, no.
But that's a good question.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, the floor is open for a motion for approval of this lease. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the renewal, proposed renewal lease agreement for office space between Arkle County and Partners Behavioral Health. Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item F is a request for approval of the August refunds and releases, and everything is in order.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Recommend approval.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And the final item G is a request for approval of the September 4th, 2012 minutes.
Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. The Region F Aging Advisory Committee, we have one announcement. And we have the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one announcement. Appointments to boards and commissions, has anybody looked over your reminder list and come across anything? Under unfinished business this evening, we have the appointment of the vacancy on the Board of Commissioners. We'll start, if anyone cares to make a motion or any discussion.
Mr. Chairman, nominate Sarah Tice.
Okay, we have Ms. Sarah Tice nominated by Mr. Norman. Let me say before there are any other motions for any other nominees, let me say this, that I do support Mr. Norman's motion. I do so because we're faced with another unpleasant duty, a duty that has become necessary not by any act of any present member of this board, or by any collective action decided upon this board, but by the actions of one person. In nearly 18 years as a commissioner, I have had to perform duties that were very difficult. None has ever been any more difficult than asking a fellow commissioner to resign. I speak to the board, for the board, when I say, no one left that evening happy. The resignation of that commissioner meant that within 60 days of the resignation of that board member, it would be necessary for this board to appoint, to appoint a replacement, or the duty would necessarily become that of the clerk of court. We believe that our clerk of court should not be put in a difficult situation as described by our failing to perform a task regardless of its difficulty or consequences that is ours. Over the years, you may have read of scandals or improprieties in counties in the region or around the state. You have never had to endure such embarrassment regarding your Board of Commissioners until recently. Surely at times, we have our differences and problems, but never in the exhibition of unethical conduct. Honestly, it is the misconduct of one person and nothing else that began a process which finalizes in four commissioners placing in unenviable position of pleasing one group of people and disappointing another. With the re-election of Ken Robertson and return of David Boone to this board, our reputation of truth and honesty will begin to be reconstructed. But our legacy of high ethics can only be cemented by the return of someone with a character beyond reproach. Circumstances have created the situation, I feel, where that person is Sarah Tice. When conditions, when conditions, the conditions existed when the former commissioner had resigned but not removed herself from the ballot, and a little more than 24 hours were left to find a write-in, people in our party called Sarah, and she responded. When others said that they did not want the appointment, Sarah was asked and answered the call again. To reject her now, I believe, would be unfair. Again, Mr. Robertson and Mr. Boone, I believe, will both be returned to this board. The reputation of this board has suffered damage by the acts of one former commissioner. We need to fix that. Please do not allow your personal feelings to prevent Ms. Tice's return, her success, and our return to credibility as a board. I support this because I feel that the alternative has already demonstrated their unworthiness. So for those reasons, I support the nominations of Ms. Tice, and I will leave the floor open for further nominations if there are any.
Mr. Chairman, I move the nominations be closed.
We have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell to close the floor to nominations, and I move that we appoint Ms. Tice by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. I would like to thank the Executive Committee for their work in this process. It was just as difficult, I'm sure, for them as it has been for us, but hopefully, we can move forward and go about doing the county's business. Any public comments this evening? Would have anybody sign up, Mr. Smith or Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Any new business to come to our attention? County managers report?
I have no report tonight.
Okay, no report. We have no closed session that I'm aware of. That being the case, I would move that we adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously.